Ladies and gents, it is, what is it? Tuesday the 15th of August. Welcome to Finance and Personnel Committee. Thank you very much for attending. Starting with item 225, are there any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests these? None? Thank you very much. Any apologies for absence, Karen?
Absolute wood.
Absolute wood. Item 227, minutes, these are the minutes from the 18th of July. They went to full council at the end of July. Are you happy that I sign them as a true record? Thank you very much. 228, approval of payments to receive and approve the attached listing of payments made since the last committee meeting. They've all circulated in advance. Alan and co have been busy spending money. As is their job. Does anybody have any questions about any of the payments listed in the appendices?
Yeah, actually. I probably haven't got the right thing up, but there's lots and lots of the payments. Some for like, you know, four pounds here, four pounds there for tea or whatever. And I'm quite happy, I don't need to know what they are, but it would be nice to be on there saying, why there's a payment for four pounds for someone's birthday, fortieth birthday. There's lots of little on the attachments that are on there. And it's not, it's not the sum, I'd like to know a bit more when they come through. Why there's a sum for someone's fortieth birthday, for example.
Have we got, is that an actual cost?
Yeah. Fortieth birthday party, I assume it's a booking at the Carnegie.
So many of us.
It's a payment out and why are we going on to bits?
It's C on the list of attachments. With all of those little ones, I mean, it's petty cash or is that for those ones, those little ones? Or is that a car payment?
That's petty cash, so basically what we're doing is we're taking our payments out of the banking.
That honestly, that's fine, but you know, just these little bits, like either like petty cash. I don't need to know if it's a month's fortieth birthday. Just thought me too. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, do we need, do we need to have them on there or kind of be stuck together? As a petty cash under twenty quid or whatever and lump them out? Because if they come up like that, I'm going to read it.
I quite like the quirky bits, you don't know what they are. My eye gets drawn to them, but I think probably from an audit point of view, they have to be optimized as much as we can. That's why, but I mean, I suppose the concern, David, would be about sort of time needed to input all the information and that sort of.
But now, listen, now I've asked a question and you can say, look, it's petty cash.
Yeah.
I won't ask it again that next year or sometime in the future. It's the first time I've seen that, I just wanted to know. Right, sorry.
No, that's absolutely, I'd rather you read it and ask questions than than not, so. But we'll never know whose fortieth birthday. I'm curious, no? But no, that's, you know, there is a lot of information in these, but that's one of the main functions of the finance committee to receive this and to question it. That's why we're here as one of the sort of checks and balances for the council, so. Does anyone have any other questions about any of the other payments that are detailed? Are there any particular note this month? No. I did like the purchase of buckets and spades. I guess what that was for. And a special sieve, which I assume was also for the beach, but. But no, cool. Can I have a proposal and a second to approve the payments, folks? Chris, Anna Sevender? David, thank you very much. Moving on, 229, financial report for the four months ended 31st of July. Again, this was the more colourful one that gets circulated everywhere, which is always a good read. Alan's done some narrative at the front of it. Do you want to take us through that narrative, Alan?
First of all, the narrative really just explains all the various columns and what they mean. It's intentional because it's. From an income perspective, our income is slightly higher than projected. This is attributable to the HRS grant bunnies, which are earmarked for the expenses. So such that income increases, it means that we've actually got a higher expenditure in the expense side. So that doesn't, that's mutual impact. Our rural payments and higher property rates. These resources have offset lower cemetery income, seven nine, oh, seven five thousand. And venues, the markets income of four thousand six hundred thirty. At the amenities committee, we had a little bit of a discussion around cemetery income. And I'm just going to dig down a little bit to really understand why there's such big variations from one month to the next. And to look at the billing of it, because I'm not sure whether there's a delay there. In terms of finance and personnel, the major underspend relates to salaries. In the detailed chapters, I've actually split that underspend into how much relates to the future increases and how much relates to posts that have not been filled. So you'll see that particular figure there. The savings and amenities and cemetery, and they've funded the overspend in venues and markets. And most of that overspend relates to maintenance. Overall, our revenue is up, like I said, by fourteen thousand three hundred. And our expenditure for the first four months is down by twenty seven thousand. So we actually, we're on the right side of the curve. In terms of previous finance committee meetings, we were asked to present other information and we haven't commented on that information. Well, first, we should all stop there if there's any question on income and expenditure.
Just because, again, one of our key roles as a finance committee is to ongoing monitoring of income and expenditure and to ask questions and to make sure we're aware of the general trajectory. And certainly from my own point of view, I often look at the variance column and just try and understand the variances, if there are any. Does anyone have any specific questions about incoming expenditure within the last month? So this is only the first four months of the year.
Yeah, there's fifteen thousand overspend on one column and what's caused that?
Yeah, can you remember which specific one it was?
Venues and markets.
Part of, most of that is viewed as repairs and maintenance. We had significant repairs and maintenance on certain things that just haven't been. That's part of the year, because repairs and maintenance obviously doesn't happen in a straight line. So we had, so we had a front end spend on that. And I just, we just cross fingers and hope that we don't have to have any major expenditure for the rest of the year to look at every line of projects.
Okay, again, if possible, and I know it's putting it on your time and everyone else's time. If that's mentioned in that, it probably is, but I've missed it. It would be great to say that overspend is because of maintenance. And you probably don't already haven't read it, so I do apologize.
Thank you. Yeah.
Terry? Yeah, I noticed there's some new gates on the market. Personal opinion, I quite like them. What's that part of spend?
No, that's a project, that's a project funded by Brecon Council.
Beautiful, okay. Do you want to add anything to that, Tina?
It's from the last round of MTI money. They put thirty thousand towards the market improvements, so that's part of the spend. And we have actually spoken to them today about them. We showed my new beautiful gates and the cheque is forthcoming in the post allegedly. Money.
Thank you.
I hope it doesn't work the other way around.
No, no, we have to evidence it before they pay us, which is fair enough.
Thank you.
Can I ask what the variance or the minus for the three thousand three hundred forty eight pound for Guildhall tea rooms are? Or Guildhall catering?
In terms of income.
There'll be a code in the left-hand side column, which was specific.
Four two O six code.
It's got minus three three four eight.
That's a variance in income, so our income was down by three thousand seven hundred forty eight pounds. Again, we estimate, we look at historical factors, it appears that it turns out of month by month. So again, people don't behave rationally one year to the next. But that's just be part of the chain that we advertise.
There's some other narrative about the tea rooms later in the finance report, but I think it is relevant to your question there, Stuart. So in the pack, you'll see that monthly sales for the Guildhall tea rooms are normally around two thousand pounds. But for some reason in July, they went down to nine hundred and sixty two quid. It's a reason for that, I mean, I assume it's to do with the scaffolding and people don't think it's open, that was my assumption, but.
And also we had to close it for just over a week while the scaffolding went in. So it was closed completely while they did that. And I think, like I say, just generally, the weather hasn't been what we'd normally expect in July. And we know that if it's not particularly great, then we don't get many people.
And let's add to that. I'm a great fan of the Guildhall tea room indeed, and taking the coffee all round. I agree with that, both those points, totally agree with those. I think that the alternative room is not so nice, not so suitable. And the scaffolding outside does deter people, but it also, I mean, it's perhaps less realistic to have tables and chairs outside, which in the middle of the summer is a nice idea and we ought to go back to that if we possibly can. I just think it's a really bad combination of disadvantages, but the basic issue is the scaffolding and we're stuck with it.
Is there a risk, because that scaffolding is, you know, there for a while, a bit longer. Is there a risk that the income's going to be affected for a period of time or are we hoping it's limited to July?
Well, I think you have to be realistic, realistic about these things. And anything to do with that is normally weather driven as well, which hasn't been great. Also, we know that people have got less money to spend, less disposable income. You know, we're in a cost of living crisis, so if you're going to not spend money, it's probably on teeth, coffee's out, isn't it, to save money? So I think we have to be really realistic when we look at these things. I would say it's not necessarily one thing in particular, but a combination. So, you know, is that likely to continue? Well, I think I'll probably be as accurate as the weather forecast on that. So, you know, I, yes, possibly. But, you know, maybe not if we have a brilliant three weeks and we could be looking at something that's been reversed for the next month, so.
That's a bit hard to judge on one month as well, isn't it? I mean, we might, in fact, if it's the same thing that happened in August, September, October, we get a bit worried.
Yeah, you get a trend then, don't you? And you know, going into the winter, it'd be lessening.
Because my nervousness is that, obviously, although sales were significantly down, the monthly staff cost was actually increased for July. But the sessional staff cost was exactly the same as it was for May. So if we knew it was going to be closed for a week, how does it work in terms of those sessional contracts? Are they zero hours or are we committed to that spend on staff regardless of opening or not?
Zero hours, what happened in that particular case is they also accumulate annual leave. So we don't accrue that. So the staff member concerned actually was off in July. So they took this, the annual leave accumulation from October last year to July. So they've all been pretty paid now.
Good. I like that answer. Terry, you had another.
My understanding was it isn't a tea room, but it's an information hub and it was given money to be so, is that still the case?
It's a tea room to support a heritage hub.
So how has the heritage side of it been affected?
What, you mean events wise?
Oh, I mean in terms of heritage.
Well, I guess that it's harder for people to come in or people have been less able to come in and have a look at the exhibitions that are there.
I would have, I would have imagined that as it's a heritage hub. I'm a bit surprised that taken to down its sector, because I would have thought as a heritage hub, it would have been fairly consistent.
I don't know, I don't have the answer to that. I would have to have really an ask, but I, I don't know. I remember a lot of the people as well, the footfall comes in, they don't necessarily buy anything. They may still be coming in, but they may just be coming in to show their mates or something. They don't necessarily buy anything when they're in there. But then it's a good thing that we have something that people can do that's free, that they don't have to spend money, particularly in the summer holidays, that they can take their kids in and have a look and.
Well, it, well, it sort of is, but not if we're losing large amounts of money on it, perhaps.
And we may come back to that, but we stick on the income and expenditures, so. That explains the answer to Stuart's question there. And you mentioned cemetery, Alan, and income. And we had a good chat about that, amenities. And rather than being a downturn in income, it's actually more a backlog in invoicing and that sort of stuff.
Possibly.
Possibly.
We need to, I actually need to better understand it, so I think that's what I challenge that, that I don't understand.
Can I just offer something on that? I think also what complicates the costings for that is the memorials don't necessarily fit in time with the actual burials. So sometimes it could be anything up to two to three years afterwards that people actually buy the memorial stones. So those people don't necessarily run alongside each other. In the main, I think there's a six to twelve month delay in their being placed, so you have to wait for the ground to level itself out. So I think that's quite difficult to forecast because you don't, you don't know when that's going to fall after.
Also, people don't fall rationed to pay for funerals right after a burial.
No, no, absolutely. So and I think that's very individual, so it's quite, you'd have to have a lot of years figures in order to get a trend out of that.
Okay, the other one we discussed last month quite a bit and quite appreciate there might not have been a huge amount of progress on this, but waste disposal costs and the need for a new contract. And I know it was on the to-do list, but has that progressed at all?
It has. Are that Alan's type credit?
We had a, we've had a meeting with Brecon Council. They've given us advice, they've given us competitive pricing. However, what we have to do is just work out what impact that has in the bins. Because at the moment, we're putting all our waste into general bins. So if we have a special bin for double banks, a special bin for other recyclables, we just need to have a kind of sit around and actually work out how many bins we have. Once we've got that information, and we've already answered that information last week, we will then get an official quote and then we can actually take it to phase two. So I think it's just getting less out of our general waste, the more into recyclables. Because we get income from selling buckets and cardboard and anything else.
Credits as well that we've promised at council. So I mean, that's all sort of information that will, you know, take a while to settle in.
Improved price and better for the environment, I like the sound of this. Good, I'm pleased, because that was also discussed at venues and markets, venues and communications. I can never remember which is the new one. Cool. I think that was it in terms of my notes. Did anybody have any other observations on the finance report? No. Are you all happy to note the report? Yeah. Thank you very much. Moving on to 230 Personnel Report. Oh, sorry, you did tell we're going to do them separately, you and I. So quick to move on. Alan's been very busy this month, as you can tell by the finance report, because there's a couple of other bits at the back, which I skipped over that. So we've got the outcome of the discussion we previously had about staff roles and allocations, which we spoke about. I think it was either May or June. Do you want to talk us through that one quickly, Alan?
Very quickly, what we did is we've done two exercises. The first one is a little table at the top of the page, where we've gone through and we've taken major roles and responsibilities and we've allocated staff to those particular roles and functions. I used the July payroll and then total cost of employment and then I've allocated that to those various functions. For example, it's very difficult if you take a town clerk, you know, because the town clerk is involved in everything, so I can't do that. So the town clerks, towns are constantly sitting in management. But the rest of it, by time, for example, a little bit of the enlotments, a little bit of amenities, finance and accounting, a little bit of management. So we've just done that exercise and we've had a kind of S and T input into that. At the bottom of it, when we're scaling the functions, this is still a work in progress. And I think the best way to do it, I've done this with finance and account. Even had a town clerk's had an opportunity to look at management ones. But the other S and T managers haven't had that opportunity. And we've suggested to them that when they have a meeting, that they actually take this and actually consider it as an opposite update just to change, like change it to those descriptions where we're appropriate. And I think this is just really, so this document will be a work in progress for a little while, we'll keep it updated and then we, then we will kind of finalize it and keep it up to date going forward. The second request for information with maybe new to it. I'm pretty good at keeping my topic updated as I'm recording. The second one is ready, just the annual business rates. These are the, these are the counts that we get levied. These are the, these are the amounts that I've just put the rateable values in so that councils can see. When we had our pre-meeting, the question about the council table at King's House was raised and I will do an investigation into that just to see why that is so high. But the rest of it, there's no distinction between, for example, between the Carnegie and the Guildhall. It's all treated as one, as one rateable value and you'll see that, that's there from the, there from the bottom. The shambles has come in. Because they were vacant for quite a while, there's quite a time delay between the valuation of this group, whatever it has to do and we, and us getting assessments. I know we have had some credits, I think we've had another credits in August for one of the shambles. But I'll update, again, I'll update the schedule and just attach to this part of the financial report going forward. So this is the amount of rates that we're paying at the moment.
Okay.
The third schedule was just enough because it's ready for the benefit of those councils on the venues and markets. It was just our work to give an overview of the tea room profitability. And we've just put net sales, purchases, gross profit, the monthly staff costs, the estimated sessional staff, because sessional staff work all over the show, so I've just taken the hours of the tea rooms open and just done a calculation there. And then we've just come to a loss. And then I've just done a break even analysis of what I think we need to sell. If we keep, if we keep our costs and reduce our costs, we would need to sell about four one five five a month just to break even on the current, on the current structure. And I've just put some notes. Unfortunately, if you haven't had a chance to go into the next four detail, it's the tea level. You know, last week was a chaotic week in terms of events and the seashore events and everything else. So again, there'll be some more input into this that we can update as we go.
Okay, that's really, so I appreciate it, it's a lot of work, so you pulled that together, which is good. Does anyone have any immediate questions on any of those documents?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had questions before, we'd pay thirty thousand for rates on this. And we could use the Carnegie rooms. I still don't understand why we don't use the Carnegie rooms. If we're paying thirty thousand for here.
No, twelve thousand.
Oh, basically, oh, twelve thousand for here, but you know, isn't it really over panering reasonably?
I think, I think one of the main issues is, well, it depends what council one Carnegie thought. Because obviously, if you're going to have it during the day and during the evenings, that would disrupt your income from your regular hirers. Because you would be taking one of our main sources of income away from meetings. And potentially, we've got the bar attached to that as well, particularly with evening meetings, that could be quite substantial.
No, that's fine.
I mean, I don't, I don't know the exact figure.
I haven't been around that.
Yeah. So, so, you know, potentially. And what I was going to say about the rates for here, it may also be because the town council uses the upper floor for storage. So we pay for this and we pay for upstairs, because all our archives and everything are upstairs. So if we're not going to use this then, and the coach house, we have the coach house as well, then we would have to find somewhere else for that to go. And there isn't any storage at the Guildhall and Carnegie, which is the biggest problem in the complex, is there's just no storage at all.
Fair enough.
And so I think potentially it's about, we have a lot of people use it regularly and it would be the disruption of the regular people coming into town.
All right, that's fine, thank you.
It is something I intend to revisit though, David. I think it's a question that needs to be explored because it's not just the rates that we pay. We do pay rent as well standing forth to us. So, you know, you're probably looking at a figure of maybe twenty five, thirty K for the town council to use this building annually. A lot of money, so appreciate what the town clerk has said. But, you know, if we were to regularly use somewhere at the Carnegie and lost X amount of income each year, we have to consider what's the value for money there.
Yeah, so it's on a journey to look at.
Yeah, I think so, but it's a long-term conversation rather than move house straight away.
That would be my concern, if we moved out, what would we move to? Because, you know, everything we're talking about now is a temporary solution. So that sounds like trestle tables up, have a meeting, put them away, which, you know, I don't know about you, but that doesn't sound very professional to me.
Is this room professional?
It's better than trestle tables. So until we get a better solution, I think, I don't know, maybe.
As I say, questions and conversations rather than decisions, but definitely right to ask the question. And as Alan said, he's going to explore that twelve K rate figure, because it does seem quite high compared to the rest of them. But as you say, it may be because of upstairs, though. Stuart?
I'm interested in talking the tea room profitability. Oh, I'm sorry, so we're actually losing, you're losing money on it. I get, I get the heritage side. And surely the suppliers that supply in the tea room maybe negotiate better prices or change the companies? Because that seems an awful lot of money to be using a month on a food, I suppose, a restaurant or a cafe. They shouldn't be making more money, they should be making money as opposed to losing money. Because you all know food, you know, profit on return is a lot better than, you know, you're losing money. So somewhere along the line, the products coming in, we're not making enough money on the products we're selling. Are we, do we need to look at, can I ask who supplies the tea rooms?
We have a mixed supplier because we're also not a big bulk buyer, so we go on the market. But our main, in terms of some of the processed food that we buy, we have once by.
Who's that? Big food. So in my knowledge of food, because it's been food industry, Big Food along with Breaks are the two big boys and they're the most expensive companies around. Now, if you went regional like Tom's Ridley or Only Berry or Pilgrims, you'd get them prices a lot cheaper and exactly the same product. Is that worth looking at?
Always, if you have contact and pursue, then we'll have a conversation with them.
But if, but if I could also, I think what happens with the analysis of why we're, you know, I could say it's a work in progress, is that some of those purchases might relate to a wedding that we've actually unbought. So the wedding is in a Carnegie, we don't go to the, to the booker, the hire and say, okay, well, you know, this is what you hired. They would, you know, estimate twenty five pounds per head, whatever the case may be. We don't go to that invoice and unpack it because time, you know, it goes through a phase. And there's, you know, for example, there might be some civil, there might be some in-house catering. So we just have to bear that in mind. And the last point that we have to bear in mind is that it's, we're just not doing stock takes as readily as we can and not because we don't want to, it's actually very difficult to do stock takes on some of the, you know, month end.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, could I just say, I agree with Stuart, councillor Terry. In the, in the manifesto unlocking Thetis' potential, it does say in there that we would aim to use local companies where possible. And this seems a perfect example of where that might be a good thing to do.
Yep, agreed. Just for seeing as you've mentioned that, I did speak to Alan about timeline. And my hope would be that we bring a draft of a local procurement policy to finance committee sometime in the autumn. So in terms of influence and, you know, but there's no reason to stop alternative suppliers being considered, you know, before then. You mentioned stock, Alan, do we monitor waste digital? Because I appreciate that demand can vary for a variety of reasons, but I would assume we've got a challenge with waste digital, if that's the case.
I think what we buy, and this is why, why the cost might be slightly higher, you actually buy something, get saved in the fridge, you take out X number and then, and then you, you use it. So I think it is a more daily usage, you know, they're making bacon rolls and they, it's there that, you know, they don't cook it and then at the end of the day, throw it away. I've seen a tea room go because I sleep in to have my own lunch. And, and it's cooked toward it most of the time, so that should kind of cut back on the waste. I mean, things like breads and rolls, they have expiry dates, but the game, they bought frozen, they stored out on a, as a need basis. And because we've got quite a bit of fridge space, we can actually do that quite well because we can store stuff. So I don't think the waste digital, you know, if we're at Rest. You know, if we were a restaurant, we would, you know, and we didn't click for a whole morning and then hope that, to hope that people would come and buy it. I think our waste would be quite high. I think it's really just mad of getting, the 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 reason for the stock tax is that it's just to get the the actual true cost of sales rather than estimated cost of sale.
Yeah.
And that's what we do at the moment.
Okay. Um so I appreciate that specific one was a request from venues committee rather than finance, but it's obviously very useful. Um is it your intention to add to that each month so that we can monitor it on an ongoing basis?
I'm happy to do that.
I think that'd be really useful. I mean, yeah, good. I mean, because it it comes down to choices at the end of the day and I'm not proposing, we, again, I'm not proposing we do anything about this um at this moment in time, but the, we've only got four months' worth of data, but if that trend continues, you're looking at a loss for the year of twenty thousand pounds. And the council needs to consider if it wants to put twenty thousand pounds into a tea room, or does it want to put twenty thousand pounds into something else? That's the conversations that need to be had. Um but, you know, you've got to understand the challenges and the costs before you can make those decisions, which is why that information is so useful. Um the only point I was going to make was on the staff roles and allocations. The percentage split is based on cost.
Thirty split is initially done on hours.
Ah.
So what what we've done is we've mapped out, so if someone works twenty hours, we've mapped out on a typical week where they spend the twenty hours. Thirty seven full-time staff, we've mapped it out. So so that would be, and then what we've done is we've put this salary input in and then multiplied out the hours so that it's it's a weighted average.
Okay, so we spend eighteen percent of our uh total employee time on management.
Yep, bearing in mind that there's a limit as to how much we can split management time.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Because also one of the variances is that we don't necessarily do the thirty jobs each week.
Yeah.
And so monthly would probably, depending what you want to look at, if you want to look at it as what we're actually working, we're just interested in costs. If it was actually what people are doing, then a monthly one would be better because that would display the whole spread of what they do over the month. Whereas we've just picked an average week, if such a thing exists. And then we've done it cost-wise on that because that's absolutely, otherwise it's getting so complex to come up with formulas to work out what's what.
That's fine. Just so I understand this, you know, it's one of those things where you don't want to drill down into so much detail because everybody multitasks and does all sorts of jobs, but it's good to have an overview of where we're at.
It's it's when it becomes unusable information.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh okay, um and the bottom Heritage Lottery project role is funded as part of the H L F grant until October. We established that at a previous meeting. Um will that be removed from that list in October or was the intention that that role carries on?
Um I think that if we can, well, it depends what the council want to do really, because I suspect that it might be something you want to look up in the budget. Um but if council intends to go for the next lottery bid, then I would say that an exemption to that role would be wise, as you would have imposed the person to deliver those aspects in the next.
Okay, so the budget that we've adopted for this financial year, does that assume the continuation of that role?
Yes, it's in there, isn't it? Yeah.
Trying to understand the process and decision making.
Well, the thing is, is that as I talked about, um when you go with lottery, lottery likes you to then employ the people that are put in the project because otherwise there's no sustainability to the project. And when that went through, we had the ability to sustain that post. And, you know, depending which direction council want to go in, we still have the ability to sustain that post. Particularly with the um added value that we're getting with all the school visits and the income that we get from school visits. Um and it is one of the key items moving forward that schools are asking for us to continue that strand within the next bid.
And where in the budget is that income churned?
Coming the, what we do is we put it under special projects.
Yeah.
So it'll be our special project income. We haven't booked that into the into the, you know, a line item. We've put all the heritage, all the heritage income, all the heritage expenditure, and then that gets put into other income and other expenditure at the end of the year.
Okay, so at some point in the future, probably September, you could basically do some narrative for us about how much money that role brings in. And then we can make an informed decision as to whether or not we're happy for it to continue. I mean, if it pays for itself, why wouldn't we? Uh essentially, but equally, we need to be aware of the difference we're making up from the funding running out to the new budget. Yep.
Uh definitely. Does the lottery funded person help with bids to the Heritage Lottery Fund?
But so will they be part of writing the project? Yes.
For other projects. So if we came and said, look, here's a a project, would that under closed help bid for that project? Because there's there's so many different little pots.
Yes, I I think the the main strength for that post is in the reports that we're giving back to lottery, that is, in that particular project, that is the the star of the show, is how successful the education has been and how much more is delivered than what we originally wrote into the bid. It's been far, far more successful than it should it to be. And um and that is when the the lottery is all about sustainability. So should council want to move forward for the next one, the continuation of something that has been so successful in this one is is, you know, a big tick in the box. So that, you know, is, I don't know whether council will even continue with the next bid. So, you know, there's lots of various.
But there's a small grant pot that local organisation can bid for and a large grant spot as well that other organisations can bid for. Will this post, does this post help with the bids for the small pots?
What, within the town council?
Yeah.
That.
Right. Good thing. Do they have the skills to have the knowledge for that?
What to?
To to put bids together.
I I think I would, I think they're more on the delivery side than the the project manager side. So they're actually just, they're, we're using them to deliver.
Deliver the project as that.
That's just, that's what, that's really the beginning and end of their role.
The specialism of education, so it's writing lesson plans, getting those adopted into the
Yeah, so it's part of the project, an ongoing project, not helping to get new project.
No, the senior managers keep the right old bids.
All right.
Okay, uh Terry.
Yeah, it's a general point of principle. I don't know how this works really. I'm really quite uncomfortable with the idea of us budgeting stuff that is by no means assured.
Can you expand? Because I don't quite understand.
And in terms of, uh you you're talking about this, this money is going out subject to us getting a a lottery bid in.
I see what you mean. So essentially, the council is plugging the shortfall is what we're talking about.
Hmm.
Which may or might not come in if grant funding comes in, which I have no problem with, as long as we're aware as councillors make a conscious decision to do that.
But she does also support other events within the town. She works weddings, like she did the stuff on the market square. So she doesn't just do the lottery bid, she does do event support as well. And is there work for us to keep hold of event stuff? Yes, there is.
Any further questions about staff roles and allocations, business rates or guildhall tea rooms? Happy? So uh Alan's going, the action's coming from that, is Alan's going to probe the King's House cost to make sure that that's a fair reflection. Um and you mentioned that the roles and allocations descriptions were being worked on a bit further, so at some point in the future, that will come back.
David and Nick haven't had the opportunity to put into it and, you know, it looks a bit unbalanced at the moment, but Alan has been writing in.
I certainly found it incredibly useful, so hopefully, you know, it can be improved on, you know, further, but what we've got there is very useful. Um and on your radar rather than a specific action, Tina is the point about the Heritage Lottery funded role and
Yeah, I have much.
Now behind that and the decision to become future. Okay, so on that particular one, we've already noted the financial report, so that's good. Uh move on to two, three, zero, which was the personnel report, which was in your pack. Uh do you think you want to add Tina to what's there?
Um yeah, we have been, you know, uh reacting to requests of um what people wanting and what councillors wanted to see staff doing. So we have acted on that, particularly when it came to managing meetings. We were on the first there. And we are um bringing in more, um Nick is still a relatively um new management, is new for him, so there's a bit of um development for him there to develop him within his role as a manager. Um I uh I've got some training coming up about charitable trusts because that does seem to be a bit of a dark art, particularly where councils are concerned. So I've got some training coming up on that. So basically, we're just trying to react to whatever people are asking us for. I know that I own Max and so much training and as soon as I find some more that you can get to, you can have that. So, you know, we're trying to this um as reacting to that as we can be. We, like I said, we had to meet the staff event and um I think people found that quite useful and councillors did say that they'd like other opportunities to engage with staff, so we will um try and get that sorted out. Uh we do have a recruitment for um market supervisor and event officer that are live at the moment, so that's that's out there. Um but all that we were saying about personnel reports, you know, um if you don't have any issues, they tend to be a bit boring. So um if you want to ask me anything, that's episode five.
Any questions for Tina on the personnel report? Nope, um the, well, first of all, it's really good to see so many councillors booked into so many different training courses. I think that's a real positive. Um and I'm pleased to see the list for the councillor induction in September. Um that's quite a good uh number. Uh slap wrist for me because my name's not there, so I need to let you know which one I want to do. Um are you going to contact councillors that are missing from that list and just tease the data out of them and?
I I have, um the chap who's delivering at the moment is because because some of those are online.
Yeah.
And and some of them are in during the day, so I had to get bespoke. Um so uh it, yeah, that's fine. I think um we'll sort of get sort of pass all of this into next week and we'll give other people a poke again because some people aren't quite sure what they want to do or you know, or which version they want to do. But I mean, there are places, because they're bespoke, there are places available on on them. People just need to tell me what they'd like to do.
You fourteen.
I'll be expecting you because you have been a councillor before, so.
No, I don't mind doing it. It's, you know, I think it's good. You always learn something new.
So I'm aware of the eight. So I'm putting it down for the forty from the twenty first.
Uh they're 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 actually, that's an evening one. So do you do, you wanted to move?
I'll do the eights.
Okay, which is the all day one. Okay, I'll move you on to that. Yeah, not a problem.
I'll let you know whether the fourteen, forty, twenty first is.
Oh no, they're both of them. You have to do.
Oh, you do? Well, thanks a lot.
They're well, they're evening, so it's split down into a.
Are we about on both days?
I'm not, so I'm going to fill the eight.
Right. Do the both.
That's what I'm going to.
You're an Italy. Okay.
Right. Just let me know, it's fine.
No, I, okay, no, that's fine. Just let me know the times, I'll come to those.
Again, thank you. And if you're, I can't read the list quick enough, but if you are sat around the table and you've not looked onto one of those, please do. Chris.
Yeah, I always think we missed off here. I don't understand why. Me, the team in the production, I can have to see it, I can see it. But I'm not on the list.
On the twenty first of July?
Yeah. I left a bit earlier because I was.
Um.
I do apologize. I will add you in.
I I couldn't vouch for the fact that Chris was much definitely there.
Did he?
Uh cool, um.
I will change up to six councillors as well, obviously.
Yep, um planning. I've had several councillors say to me that they're finding planning quite difficult because they don't understand uh planning law and I think, you know, it's crazy legal in a certain sense. Um I remember Nalke coming and delivering a planning course in this chamber, which was really useful.
All right.
Um I've had at least two or three councillors now say to me that planning is their big concern and they feel, you know, uncomfortable sat around the table. So can we look into whether we can get Nalke in to deliver an in-person planning training session?
Yes. Is the answer. And uh they they're not doing it in person.
Okay.
Um but as there's several of us, I may be able to convince them that it's worth their while.
I think I think you'd get a good attendant.
We should do the E E learning.
Yeah, I saw that, which is good.
And you, did you do a different one, Matt?
I I did the E learning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, sorry, it was a Zoom call, so it was really good actually.
So, I mean, I can, I can try and get those in, but that probably now won't be until sort of like, because they've set up their planning for the rest of the year, so I may or may not be able to get that.
Yeah, well, I'm just responding to what people have asked me.
Yeah.
Um so if you can look into it and we'll see what's possible, basically, but.
I'll have a chat.
Um yeah, out of everything training wise, that's what people have mentioned to me. So I've got Terry and then Mike.
Uh yeah, I'll deck up those comments, uh chair. Um I have been on training, I have had a uh training at Breckland, which was very, very good. Um however, that was about property, not about the mechanics of law and what planning involves. So in in that respect, I really do feel if I want to um do my duties as a as a uh as a councillor to the full, then I would appreciate some training. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mike?
I I'd welcome more planning training and and certainly we'd send, we'd aim to attend it if possible, so mainly more than just those who express an opinion. Uh I think it would be worth considering whether councillors who have not previously been involved in planning uh might benefit from possibly attending a meeting of Breckland Planning Committee to see where, how do the decisions made by those who actually make the decision, we only pass opinions. Um and maybe a group of us might go to the next planning meeting. We've got two um members of this council for on that. It is, so there's some experience as well as some possible learning situation.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Might even be some Fethford applications before the committee, so that would make it more relevant.
Imagine.
You could choose a day to suit.
Yeah. Chris, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I did the online training, which was really bad. No matter how many times I put in different answers to the question, I never got above this sort of level. And in the end, I just gave it up because it was just no matter what you did, you took two steps forward, you said you'd go three steps back and it wasn't very good, isn't it? It appears that some of the answers were correct anyway.
You can't put flat roofs for everything.
Flat roofs, really, anywhere. I mean, the fact that, I think the planning is good. I went to my first planning meeting at Breckland and uh mine was logical, right, logical objection. Wasn't.
Hmm.
Because what we wanted to object to was a highways issue and not a planning issue. Now, to be honest with you, if you don't know, it's quite complicated. You know, I mean, it was quite similar, my my, they landed swan in the morning, it's either side of the railway line. The builders agreed to have a footpath either side of the railway line. So people, et cetera, et cetera. Suddenly on the new plan, one side of the path had gone. So we voted nine to one to object to the thing and we were then told in no uncertain manner by officers at Breckland, you can't object to this on those grounds because that's a highway. And you're thinking, what? And it's part of it.
Well, I think part of that's about direction, isn't it?
Yes, it is. So and and as someone said to me once, if you object to a plan at Breckland, they seem to take it personally.
Oh, yes.
And this is it, as if you're trying to stop or promote it forward and 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 despite the growth I've had before, I mean, we definitely run foul of the soundings at Breckland.
I I think there is a reason for that. If 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 you object on what effectively is furious ground, are you on planning grounds? Then those who have put your application in will come back to you and and appeal. And so time and money will be spent listening to appeals. They don't want to spend money on and time on appeals. So they they play it safe. If you want to um stop something going through Breckland, you've got to be on hard planning grounds, not on love or money or anything else. It's got to be, it's just planning law. If it's not, forget it.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And and this is, this is the problem, I'm I'll put this, it it's a, a lot of it, I feel, is direction from the chair. We should know what it is we're objecting to and the grounds we are and so on and so forth. But I think uh But I think also knowledge and experience is vital in that. The more training we get, the better, frankly.
So to bring us back to where we started, as much as I'd like to sort out the Breckland planning process, that's not the gift. However, I do think we should respond to requests from town councillors and make our contribution to the planning process as good as it can possibly be, limited as it is. So if you could take that as an action around planning training, I think that'd be really useful.
Also, we should be getting the first draft of the new designs.
Yeah.
So and that, it may be worth waiting till after that because then that would be embodied in it and then we can get training on that as well.
Yeah.
And we're all going to need that.
I would agree with that lady saying, we did a planning in here. Really good. The black or white, she's broken.
Yeah.
Playing around language.
It was 2015 and I have been previously on the Breckland Planning Committee and attended training on planning. But I learned stuff a lot at that training session from now, so.
Do you know who the lady was? Because she might be with a different organisation. She's with a different training organisation, but I will, I will, I will.
I guess.
I will, I will pursue via her if that is the person that might be easier to get over spoke calls.
Good. And only two more points. Meet the staff. I was really pleased with how that went as a sort of a starter. You know, it's high time councillors met staff on, you know, those sort of situations. I know the councillors that attended appreciated it as well. What I'd quite like to do for committee or an agreement is something closer to Christmas, even November or December. And in the evening, because the main feedback I had from councillors that weren't there was because it was during the day, they were at work. So I'd quite like it, and I appreciate our style. They're at work during the day, but I quite like the idea of something closer to Christmas, you know, mulled wine, mince pie. Well, maybe not mulled wine, they might get trouble. Alcohol free mulled wine. But yeah, even November, December. I appreciate Christmas as a busy time for the council because also Christmas lights. But maybe once that's delivered at the end of November, after that. And if we got a date in the diary soon, because the other thing is those that did work, it wasn't sufficient notice for them to book leave. You know, I appreciate we was trying to get on with it. If we book it sooner rather than later, then that will help.
Under this personnel, you stood right face to thank the staff, you have to say booking the last week.
Yeah.
We did markets and etcetera, so creating down the town. Things like it, the bits and pieces, the visit from the Japanese.
Yeah, busy week.
Really good. You know, and I think we should all write to thank them. I did send email off. But I think it shouldn't have been forwarded to people.
Yeah. I'm glad you sent an email off because I did too. So, you know, I thoroughly enjoyed the marketing stuff.
Yeah, I had a really good time with Japanese.
I saw, yeah, it's good to have Roger's not here. I saw a picture of that chain. He'll get you. Terry?
I would echo that. I also sent an email. It involved a lot of hard work, the stuff that went on five days over last week. And I really appreciate the efforts that the staff made in that way.
I'm very much appreciated by members of the public. I mean, if you see 25 kids apparently on the beach, totally enjoying themselves and 50 adults on in debt chairs around them, supporting them, loving parents, I suspect. And if you then walk down the street and find there were 30 stalls, 30 stalls, I mean, that's pretty good. That's a really good effort. So absolutely justified sending emails. Well done.
And I don't, you'll probably pick up on this at tomorrow's meeting, Mike, but I walked from my house all the way along the river, about an island, all the way through town and barely saw a piece of litter on the floor. So the town was actually, you know, looking great. And the only last is, you've mentioned about recruitment there. Certainly one of those positions, the deadline has now passed. I'm not sure about the other position. Can you not give too much away? Give an indication of how the recruitment has gone in terms of number of applicants or general interest?
The first one with the market supervisor closed, yeah.
Yep.
And the events officer did, we had over 30 applicants. David invited some in because you do get some random applications coming. David just brought them in just to explain to them what the actual role is. Sometimes people aren't completely sure what they're applying for or, you know, they'll have to work weekends even for events. People sometimes don't know they've got work weekends. So he's had a chat to them all. There's two, I believe, that he's emailed about. One is already in a post, but can't make the date, but it's needed to come and be in. So I think we're just looking at potentially that being at the end of the week or the beginning of the week. So depending on availability, or if you're happy just to go with one councillor present or nominate another councillor.
Yeah, that's good that there's plenty of interest in applying. That's the first hurdle. Good. Any other questions or comments from anybody on the personnel report? No, so we are required to note a useful discussion. Thank you very much. Note, move on to two, three, one, electricity and gas contracts to review the quotations obtained from the council broker regarding the electricity and gas contracts. Alan?
At the moment, the gas and electricity market is very volatile. So what happened, the issue quotes and they're all expired four o'clock in the afternoon. And that's the market after game at nine o'clock in the morning and it will go to four o'clock tomorrow. It's going to be that change. What we've done is, there are just two things that I'd like the committee to understand. First one is that when it's known that our contracts are coming up for renewal, my telephone doesn't stop ringing. I can get up to five or six brokers phoning, phoning me a day and I'm very nervous about that. So what we've done is last, in the previous time we did this three years ago, we used the McKent Public Sector Bargaining Organisation and they affiliated with Blaze Energy. Blaze Energy were going to offer to do it again this year, but they just seemed to have gone quiet. And NALC has a preferred broker called Utility Aid. So Utility Aid were one of those people that Davey and the assistant I checked with NALC, but they actually are a preferred supplier. And we've actually ended up going with them. So they, that's how we've got to the, to the broker that's offered us the price. The brokers don't make recommendations is the second thing. And the question is, how long do you want to contract for? If you want to contract at those particular prices? When we did the initial, when we did our budget, we did it at the peak of the, of the energy crisis. So I'll show you a graph and you won't guess. Here's the graph of the, of utility prices, for example. And of course, when we set our budget, we were doing it right here, the, at the peak. So prices have gone down a lot and you'll see that that affected the budget and the cost of the offer. What I've done is, this only information only came in this afternoon, so I haven't had time to put it in the presentation. But I'll quickly, if I can, just share, share the price of that all day. Let me just make this a little bit bigger. On gas, the estimate our current spend is about £7,300. But you don't have this paperwork at all and I do apologise. So it'll be on the screen. SSE have offered a two-year, a one-year contract at 13,506. So it's virtually double our current spend. The two-year contract is 13,6408. So that's the second number in that particular. Let's have a flash there. I'm wondering why everyone was looking at people. Okay, there we are. Okay. So, so, so these are the two suppliers. One is for gas. The maximum contract is two-year. That's on the market. So for a one-year contract from SSE is 13,506. A two-year contract is 13,640. There's an alternative supplier called Energy Shield, but I'm not sure which supplier that is. And they slightly higher, they're offering 14,311 for a one-year contract and 14,608 for a two-year contract. So that's the options we have in terms of gas. We budgeted 19,000 pounds for, for gas. 90,207 pounds for gas for the year. So this is within our budget parameters. We're not big users of gas. You can see by the total cost that we have for a year. It's not our biggest source. Obviously, there's no renewable gas sources. Gas is a dirty energy. It's brown energy. So there's no savings there. The second quote that we got, so let me stop sharing so that you won't look at me back here again. On the utility quotes. And at the moment, they estimate that our consumption will be about £15,600 for this year based on our old contract prices. Our brokers only got prices from SSE because they say none of the other suppliers would cope with the number of metres and supply sites that we had. A 12-month contract is 23,909. A 24-month contract is 24,446. And a 36-month contract is 24,665. This is all 100% renewable energy. So the question is, are the quotes acceptable, which I know is very difficult. We just have to look at the process that we've gone through. And the second one is, how long do we actually contract for?
In the narrative for the gas, Alan, you said that there was a difference between the quote and what we had budgeted for.
Yeah.
But not for the electricity. How much did we budget for electricity?
We budgeted 55,290.
Okay, cool. And both the electricity ones, one year or two year, are 100% renewable?
We've got three options for.
For a year, yeah.
All three are renewable energy.
Yeah. And there could potentially be the same supplier for the gas and electric. Yeah.
In your first sentence, I think, Alan, you said the energy market is volatile. And it, and it is. There are no moved away from the senior interest studies of the noughties and so forth. So it seems reasonable that if the longer the contract you take, the, you can fix your costs for a certain amount of time. Okay, so prices might go down in that time, but your costs are fixed. You can budget for it. And it seems instinctively the safest way to go.
Is utility aid used by lots of authorities? Okay, so. They're now, NALC's preferred supplier.
They are now.
So they, yeah, or National. The National Association.
So like, if lots of people use them, one would expect them to be experts in the field. Wouldn't it be silly not to continue using them? Now, we, none of us really know anything about the doing. So surely it would be wise to stick with people that do know something about it.
Yeah. So they've supplied us with the quotes. The main question for us, so we've, that's, that's a given that we've accepted utility aids work, if you like, broker in the work. It's really a question of one or two years or three years in the case of electric.
Would they not come up with the recommendation?
No.
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 Okay.
No.
It's impossible.
No, that's fine. The thing is, we, we don't, we don't know. Whatever we do is a gamble.
Even for them, there's an element of it's still a gamble, even though we do, why they won't do the recommend.
Yeah. It's a sort of a thing that I'm uncomfortable discussing it because whatever we come up with could well be wrong.
Well, yeah, anything we come up with could be wrong on any subject. You know, we're consciously taking a risk. Mike, so you had to end up.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk what Terry Land said. I, I think we are living in a volatile world. I think particularly to think about gas, presumably most of our gas comes from, is imported, so to speak. And there's a player, not far off, only a stronger hold on the market. And it's a volatile supplier. I, I think everything points to possibilities that would be more political upheavals in the next two, three years. And therefore, I agree with Terry that a longer term contract gives us a safety net, but also, as Terry points out, it makes your planning easier as well. So I'd certainly recommend going for a longer period, maybe up to three years.
Is there any discount applied if we go with the same supplier for both gas and electric or is it? And in, I don't know if the others have got this list, but on, that's on my printout here. I can see the list of metres and I am quite shocked just how many metres there are. I mean, have we done a bit of a review as to whether all of these, because, you know, we're paying a separate stand in charge for, for every metre? And there's two pages worth here. I mean, have we tried to consolidate some of these?
Alan's life is traumatized by trying to get three metres. The thing is, it's getting people to actually deal with this because for each metre, it's a separate thing. Although whether it's discussed, you know, one metre at a time. And trying to get the metres changed or anything done for our Alan is, well, considered ripping his head out on man, you know. And it's, it's very difficult. Our intention is to do exactly that. However, it's proving somewhat challenging.
We've been writing to, with SSE our supplier, they're not actually the metre replacements. We've been, we've been getting names. I've been writing to them now for two years. And we have the stage where they're now contacting us. But for example, they'll come to one Christmas light. So we have Christmas light needs to. I don't know whether it's because they take supply or other reporting, so they need to do that. For example, that's kind of sick. They've come three times after the riverside, Christmas light. If they're live one, they don't realise it's, it's high ground. So they need, their equipment can't do it. Officially, we have to find them because we have very few people in the organisation that, so some, you know, where that means is situated. So we can hunt around to find it. The second one is that we, they'll come, they won't have the right equipment and the third time they'll come. So we've actually, I think out of all those meetings, I think we've only had about three successfully changed so far. But it is a mission and it's in our interest because we have, we've put in energy saving processes, you know, Carnegie, we mutually, if you had to ask me, have we actually saved electricity? I can tell you, you know, because we actually don't, we're not, we're getting estimated bills. And it has such a significant implication because it becomes very seasonable. So the bill for this will be on the GW standing for them. And we're not dealing with that. But just to show you, we can go from a £4,000 debit to a £3,000 credit within three months or six months. And it's very, very difficult. So we have been trying to do that and it's just a work in progress.
Because we can't work out operational trends until we have smart meters. You know, so when we're talking about carbon calculators and things like that, literally we're having to put big, big numbers in because we don't actually know what the readings were that month. So it's, it's really difficult in order to calculate those things. But like I say, it's, you know, there's probably a lot of people are trying to get into smart meters as well.
Okay, so that's a, a long-term aim to consolidate some of the metres and ensure smart meters. As long as that's recognised.
Just one thing on this, I mean, I agree with Terry again on this. If, if we went with two years on SSE for both of those, we still saved somewhere in the region of 34, my bad maths, from what we'd budgeted anyway.
Yep.
So in, in an effect, there's a kind of false saving already and we are guaranteed for two years then. So it seems to make a lot of sense to do that.
Agreed.
In two years, we're going to have a change of government anyway. So it's good luck.
Be close enough to give him the slap.
I didn't believe that for a minute.
No, it'd probably be even worse in two years.
I think it'll make a fine bit of difference.
Eight, some true. So what I was going to make. So Mac is suggesting the two-year contract with SSE for both gas and electric. Are you happy to propose them? Is somebody happy to second them? You can't, Mr. Land, you're not a committee member, but Mr. Terry here is. Welcome. Welcome as you are, I can only take votes from committee members. Um, so that's the first point. And the second point is to set the parameter because obviously these prices will now be out of date. Um, do you have a sort of tolerance in mind, 5%?
I was thinking 5%. I mean, I'm not sure. Haven't looked at the BBC News app tonight to see whether it'd be a disaster, but I would imagine unless there's something overnight.
Yeah.
Um, I've got an agreement to give to the broker tomorrow morning at that point, because Mark and Terry are going. And so I'm just like, check that the tuck box is available.
It's one of the few times when an 80% increase was actually very pleasing.
I know.
Much less than what we were. I mean, personally, I would have gone for an engineering 10% plus or minus, do you know what I mean? 5% isn't a lot and we know that.
Well, ordinarily I would agree, but Alan's graph shows there's been a consistent, uh, price for at least a good few months. So, uh, it shouldn't shoot out. Um, are you happy, Mac, to include that 5% in your proposal?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think you have something in there.
Yeah.
5%.
So, uh, the decision for us, and it's a resolved rather than a recommendation, um, is SSE, two years for both and Alan's allowed to negotiate tomorrow. It might have gone down by 5%, um, but it might go up, but a tolerance level of 5%. Are you all happy with that?
And you can check for a wind trial if that could.
Could, can I just add on to that, sorry?
Yeah.
If it is over 5%, what process do you want us to follow in order, in order to renegotiate?
Medical and emergency meeting, which would be my, which would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure, look, and today's pricing has gone up over the course of the day.
That's why we have a tolerance.
How much did it go up by?
Um, around, uh, around two per unit. Not a lot.
Does it say what?
No.
Um, and would this new contract be to start immediately or from the first of October?
Okay.
Good. Would it be locked in straight away?
It'd be locked in. We have to sign a head rule tomorrow.
Just, just while we're talking about prices going up and down and, you know, and we'd have to call an extra meeting to authorise above or below the 5% or whatever, should it not be wise to go at 10%? Because it's not going to change who we're going to go with, is it?
And do we have a choice anyway? Uh. If Mac is suggesting 10%, I'll. Well, uh, uh, the town clerk might tell me off, but, um, having just taken the vote, um, but could I have a show of hands to increase to 10%?
Because you've actually recorded the vote and. Did that record the vote? Did we get, did it record the vote?
Before it goes up again.
Yeah. It's literally sticking away as we're talking. So what should we do, do the vote then?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, the proposal is SSE, both gas and electric for two years with a tolerance level of 10%. All those in favour? Happy Karen?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Not going back now.
They're going back now, they're not discussing it anymore.
If we go home and do insubordinate somewhere else.
It's a proper one, over seven o'clock.
Does that give you everything that you needed in terms of your?
Yeah. Before we move on, can I just ask about the metres? At what committee should that be discussed and, and at what committee should we push to make sure that we're trying? I know the, the staff are trying to get that done, but is it something that ought to be on an agenda somewhere?
I think, I think because it's, um, personnel is a, um, finance of it is. It tends to come, well, no, because not all of it is amenities. So I, and it's because it covers the whole council. Traditionally, if it's a whole council issue, it sits here because mainly because me and Alan are, are here together. So, um, I would say that you just keep prompting us about it through this because it's, so it's driven by finance. Um, so we need to, it's not long, it's, and, and practically if you keep it on here, me and Alan can't ignore it.
Can I suggest, Karen, that in the action points that you, um, order an action for an update on metre readings? And if we put that for, uh, the end of March, uh, because that'll be six months into the new contract and we don't expect it to be completed by them, but if we have an action, uh, point for progress update, then that means it doesn't get lost.
You can put interims on that because you could, because what, she puts it into decisions and it pings up every time we open our laptop that you have this task to do. Um, and if, if we have an interim, sort of like bimonthly interim for us and then that will keep me and Alan on track.
Um, and of course, that cost assumes that consumption remains the same. So, you know, with our, I can't remember what it's called now, but our green policy, you know, there are proposals to look at consumption and reduce usage and that sort of things.
And also I would say having the roof insulated, I would expect to see a decrease in usage this year anyway to have it with an insulated roof.
I mean, when you're talking about these sorts of costs per unit, as, you know, same as people at home, businesses and charities and organisations have got to drive down usage and it makes a big difference. Right. Uh, 232 correspondence to note any correspondence received, none. 233 committee officers update, any update of information since the agenda was released? None. Action points, not timely, we're just talking about them. So I think in your pack, there was a list of, uh, action points. Uh, fact, town council website is still being developed and policies are to be added to the website once the update has been completed, to be confirmed after the venues and markets meeting on the 19th of July. Uh, where are we at with that, Terry? Because it's all touched upon at the July meeting, wasn't it? You've got a meeting coming up in September. What's going on with the website?
Um, at the mo, at the moment, not very much. I've, uh, I've, um, I've engineered a working party to have a look at it. The situation is that we, I've, I've spoken with David, uh, we're in further communication. Uh, we're in the process of arranging meetings, um, get as many people in as we can to sit down and try and thrash out what sort of website we want and need. I think there's quite a gap at the moment between, uh, the new website and what we would feel as the working party, we would feel we would need. So it's gonna, it's gonna take a bit of thrashing out.
Okay. That being said, do you have a proposed date of when the new website might go live or?
Nothing.
No?
Nothing.
I'll just leave that one.
I think it is, how, how can I say? David, David and myself have agreed that there are four items we really, we really need to work on hard at present and that is one of them.
Cool. Uh, and I think the main reason it's on our agenda is because, uh, we've been told off two years in a row from the auditor about the inefficient website and I'm determined not to be told off again. So, um, uh, we'll leave it on there, but, uh, good to hear that you've made some progress.
Yes.
Appreciate it's a big job. Uh, next one, risk management, the lease between Norfolk County Council, Trafalgar Council and Charlesborough Centre. The Chair suggested next night to quantify the liability of the council as a party to the lease to be undertaken to help manage the risk identified in the risk assessment. And the proposed date for that, Alan, is the end of August. Is that still the case?
Three weeks, I assume. It's about, it's the, the next week.
Okay, that's fine.
I was thinking about how to do it, but.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Again, that's tied with the audit discussion because it's identified as part of the audit. Um, so if that date does need to be extended, then that's not, uh, awful. Uh, circulate list of business rates, that's been included in the finance report, so that one can be removed. Marketing of unoccupied shambles units, the engagement officer has been provided with all the information and I have seen the post on Facebook. So thank you very much for organising that. That can be removed. Out of interest, has there been any inquiries as a result of that post?
Um, there, there has been, but it came in before that one out. Um, um, there's conversations going on, um, with the company that are also speaking to Breckland, which is why it's been a bit longer in the vague, yeah? See if they can get any start-up help, I think. So potentially that'll be brought back to us following the discussions with Breckland. That's viable for them.
Good. Uh, action plan for managing waste disposal. Uh, we've heard the update on that, but we'll leave that one on there until the new contract is signed, which likely will be at the September meeting by the, so that's.
We'll bring it to September because I think in terms of the value.
Yeah.
If the lease come back.
Okay, good. Staff roles and cost allocations to be prepared, that's been done, so that one can be removed. To send reminder to councillors to attend the meet the staff event, um, that has been done, but that will be replaced by the action to organise the new meet the staff event in November or December.
Yeah.
That action could be amended. To organise training on decisions before the end of August. Um, training's been organised face-to-face for the 12th of September. And that probably needs to be added to that training list that we saw earlier as well if it's not already on there.
Yeah.
Um, so we can do that. Um, we can remove that one as well because that's been actioned. Finance officer to distribute electricity and gas contract information, a specific agenda item that has been done and we've made a decision, so that can be agreed. And there was a request for a profitability analysis of the tea room during the discussions and that has also been done and that can be removed. So that's reduced the action list quite considerably. Thank you very much. We've added two or three more, but, uh, I do think we've, we've removed more than we've added, so that's a good thing. Um, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Does anyone have any suggestions or requests for media release? None, thank you. Item 236 exclusion of press and public to consider resolving that pursuant to the public body's admission to meetings at 1960. The press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the contract, confidential nature of the business to be discussed. The remaining agenda item is contract specific and therefore fits the bill. Are members content that we exclude press and public or in this case turn off the recording? Agreed. Thank you very much.